I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for tonight, October 7th, 2015, to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
We have ten present and two absent.
Okay, and let the record show the Commissioners Purdue Dolan and Morgan are excused from this evening's activities. Commissioner Henderson, can you lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How's the time for any public comment on tonight's agenda items? Is there any public comment on tonight's agenda items?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Council, Chris here at 820 West Helena. I'd like to speak on 15457, which is actually a communication that I submitted that will get recommended to the Economic Development Committee. For those that are interested, what I'm going to do at that meeting is to talk about in detail a presentation on the appraisal process that I talked about on Toolstrip when I was here. Loan-to-value ratios, underwriting requirements, comparable properties, design review impacts, the things that make up the administrative side of these issues as they relate to the developer. There'll be some materials and it will be an in-depth talk if anyone is interested. The other thing I'd like to talk about is 15477, the appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. As I said in the op-ed in the paper, when you have a six to nothing decision from the Historic Preservation Commission with the concurrence from the Historic Preservation Officer, if it's overturned on an eight to one vote at council, there's a disconnect. And we can pretend that it's not. It is, and it's only a matter of time until we have to have that discussion. And so, I guess the question I have is, why, in light of the problem, why are we reappointing? And I'm sure they're nice people, I don't know them personally, this is not a personal thing. But in light of that disconnect, it would seem appropriate to me that rather than reappoint, we ought to be reappraising. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Other public comment? Seeing none, move to the approval of the minutes from the September 16th, 2015 regular meeting. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting that occurred September 16th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with nothing on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no items to be addressed that aren't on the agenda tonight. Move into Chief Executive report, starting with the report that it's four to zero in the bottom of the fifth, with the Cubs leading, so. Those of you wanting to know that. Ooh. So we got our two seasons in Montana, winter and road construction, the latter which is coming to a close here in Butte Silver Bow next week. We're finished up the paving this week on the first half of the Blacktail Lane and finished the milling today, and we'll be proceeding with completing the second half of the paving from the, I guess it'd be the three-way stop sign at Rampart out to Redwood, Redwood Drive. And that'll conclude our hot plant operation for the summer, as well as the street closures. So, but I think, you know, hats off to Dave Schultz and Tom Woggins and all of the crews, Nick Sanford, that are working on those roads because they did a heck of a job this year. We covered a lot of roads with some new black and whatnot, so we will, if you do have potholes, continue to report them, even though the hot plant's down, we have the dura-patters and can get out and fill holes on an as-needed basis that may have been missed. We also, I got a quick report on our, in case you recall, we decided, Transit Manager Gary Keeler decided to move forward with moving to a free ridership model on our Butte Silver Bow Copper City Connection bus this year. And with the completion of the first quarter of ridership numbers, it's good news, but probably not a huge surprise that there's a lot more people riding the bus now that it's been free. The numbers compared, the first quarter this year compared to the first quarter last year, there are over 11,000 rides given increase this year over last year. And we're going to continue to look at those numbers through December when we reevaluate that program and what the cost benefits are in moving forward. But good to see that we're getting a lot more folks riding the bus with the model that Mr. Keeler brought forth, so report back on that as we find things out. Happy to announce for the second year in a row that Butte Silver Bow was notified we're one of the top three finalists for the Montana Tree City of the Year Award. So anybody who says we don't have very many trees, we've been in the top three now for the last two years. I think due credit goes to our County Extension Agent Kelly Anderson and our hard-working Urban Forestry Board that formerly entered the direction of Janelle Madrazo and now former Commissioner Charlie O'Leary has taken over her spot, although she still is on the board. And so, thanks go out to Kelly and our Urban Forestry Board volunteers for keeping us in the running there. Last year, we, I think, we ended up getting second, but it was $5,000 grant to go towards trees that are being applied towards the Copper Mountain Baseball Park project. This year, we'll see where we fall out. And that'll, we'll find out Friday at the concluding luncheon at the Montana League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference over in Bozeman. Construction season, that's slowing down, although we won't totally shut down construction. One thing that I have asked Mr. Schultz to set up and we'll be moving forward with here is we're going to have some public open house walkthroughs of our two largest construction projects that we've seen here in Butte Silver Bow in the last several decades. Monday, October 19th, starting at five o'clock, we'll conduct an open house at the Metro Sewer Plant out on Centennial Avenue. And Tuesday, October 20th, beginning at five o'clock, we will have a public open house walk-through at the Basin Creek Water Treatment Facility out at, near the junction of Basin Creek Road and Hans, or is it Herman Gulch, Herman Gulch, whatever it is, junction out there. So that'll be a good opportunity for folks to get a look at a couple of 30-plus million-dollar public infrastructure projects. The metro one is getting close to completion, whereas the Basin Creek one is just starting to ramp up, but they're both very, very busy sites. Swank is the contractor on both of those projects. And so, again, 19th and 20th of October, both at five o'clock, first one being metro, second one being Basin Creek. And as we continue to move ahead with additional construction projects, the Airport Authority, Moonee Airport Authority met earlier today and approved the recommendation of the Selection Committee to award its new terminal construction project to Markovich Construction. That will be with the improvements that have been made to the parking lot out there, seven-plus million-dollar project. Just so folks know, this was a project that was awarded via the General Contractor/Construction Manager Method, not the low bid that's standard up here on the third floor. And so, they will immediately, upon getting a contract agreed with Markovich, start the pre-construction planning and work process. And then, the idea is, anticipation is that early summer is when construction will start in earnest out there. And that was a project, or a process where Markovich was selected over Swank, Dick Anderson, and Jackson Contractors in the finalist list of contractors who competed on that project. So, a lot of good stuff going on. That concludes the Chief Executive's report. So, we will move into Section 1, Bid Opening Communication 15-443. Dave Schultz, Public Works Director, requesting council authorization for a bid opening regarding solid waste collection. Mr. Schultz and County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is approval publication that does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chief Executive, Members of the Council, we have one bid. The bid tonight, of course, is for the contract for collection of solid waste, collection of garbage within our solid waste collection district, which is basically the urban area of Butte Silver Bow. We have one bidder, and that one bidder is McGree Trucking, and they have indicated their PSC number on the envelope, so it looks like it's a legitimate bid. I handed out a bid tabulation. There are two different bid items in this bid. The bid item number one is the Residential Solid Waste Collection Service for the community. Toward the bottom of bid item one on the bid tab, I've put basically the engineer's estimate. We've been hopeful that the cost would come in substantially the same as they are now. So the existing contract is $97,861 per month, and that equates to $8.62 per location per month.
That's the existing contract cost? Okay.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Excellent.
So the bid for the residential solid waste for a 56-month period is $5,947,218.16. And then, the second line on the bid tab, that equates to $106,200.32 per month. And if we take and divide that number, which is 106,000, my calculator quit working. I might need to borrow your phone. So if we take 106,200.32, and we divide that by the 12,567 locations, it comes out to $8.47, 45 cents per location per month. For bid item number two, and bid item number two is picking up and processing the recyclables at the three Butte Silver Bow drop-off sites in our community, and those are at Platinum and Excelsior, by NCAT, and by the Civic Center. That amount is three, for the 56-month period, is $362,295.26. That equates to 6,300. Well, I got to divide that by, excuse me. So it's 362,295 for 56 months. And 26 cents, divide that by 56, that equates to $6,469.55 per month. If we divide that by three, that equates to $2,156.52 per location per month. The grand total of the bid is $6,309,513.42, and that includes both the solid waste pickup and the recycling costs. And that's the only bid, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
$6,309,513.42, and that's the sum total of the solid waste pickup plus the recycling services.
Very good. Were you just going to ask for repeat, Commissioner Sorge? Commissioner Ralph?
Just so I can be better prepared, I think it's an engineer thing, but do I need to bring a calculator to all the bid openings from now on?
Commissioner Henderson.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'm just a little confused here, Dave, on, I never had a chance to get, when I asked you there, the, we have 12,567 places that were being picked up, right? Right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And before, for some reason, we had 11,353 locations. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, over here, you have the 862 for the 11,353, but we have 12,567. So what does that come to?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Henderson, the 12,567 is the count that we have here at the courthouse of the premises that we charge the solid waste collection fee to. That's number of locations within the solid waste collection district. This number is somewhat dynamic. Houses get built, houses get torn down, vacancies occur, that type of thing. So when the contract is renewed, it's not unusual for that number to be updated. And so, the updated number in this case was about 1,200 or so locations more than were in the previous contract. But what I should say is that the contract that is part of the bid package that, if the council decides to, would be executed with the McGrees, allows us to adjust that number on an ongoing basis. And whenever there is more than 20 locations, more or less, we adjust the contract amount accordingly. So if this number, 12,567, changes over the course of the 56 months that this contract will be in force, we're able to adjust that number either up or down to reflect new houses or houses that have been vacated.
Follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chief Executive, so in reality, then, and I think McGree Garbage Service is, number one, I mean, they're great, and I, but I think what they did, then they picked up probably for a long time, this 12,500, and never even got adjusted, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Henderson, I guess that that could be true. I don't know that the McGrees keep an ongoing tally of locations that they pick up. I think this is something that typically gets adjusted at contract renewal times.
Okay, follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'm just a little confused, back to this bid item number two again, recycling. I kind of was under the understanding we were totally out of the recycling situation, that we never actually approved anything or had more discussions on it. I thought it was going to be an Aware and the McGree Corporation going in on that together and doing their thing, and I thought we were completely out of this thing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Henderson, we are completely out of the curbside recycling idea. We did the pilot program, and we looked at that concept, and you're correct, Commissioner Henderson, that those private companies, McGree and Aware, asked to propose that they do that independently of Butte Silver Bow. But the proposal that we have to you folks, and the recommendation that we make to you is that Butte Silver Bow continue to sponsor the three locations for drop-off. Our entire, well, there's outlying areas of the community that aren't part of the, that won't have the ability to have the curbside recycling, so they'll be able to use the drop-off sites. Plus, there'll probably be a significant number of our community who don't choose to pay monthly for curbside recycling, who would still want to be able to drop off at the drop-off sites. And so, our recommendation to the council is that we continue to operate those and maintain those free drop-off sites, but we are not going to have any responsibility or involvement in the curbside recycling business.
Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'm going to use Commissioner Henderson's quote. I'm a little bit confused. This number for the, this 12,000, was this, because there was talk about an expanded garbage service earlier, so is this for the expanded, like, the outlying areas? Are we still going to be, is this the number for the outlying areas?
Dave? Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, no. This number reflects our count of the premises within the existing solid waste collection district. The contract that we will hopefully execute with McGrees contains provisions for expansion to Walkerville, to Southview, to Rocker and Ramsey, but those will be SID processes that we'll have to go through, and the council will have to approve. And so, this number does not reflect any expansion at this point.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so this difference in the price, the monthly cost, is that going to appear on residents' taxes in their November statement, rather than the 861, the 845?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the amount has been fixed that will appear on the taxes, and I think it's going to be $93 a year. I think that Budget Director Gleason is not here tonight, but I believe that that is the correct amount. And Zhao, do you recall? 93. So, the actual cost to Butte Silver Bow will be 845 times 12, that's $96, $97, $98. And so, the $93 that will be on the taxes that has been approved by the council will fall just short of covering this entire amount.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and I note now that we will be doing a five-year contract instead of a three-year contract, as we've done in the past, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fisher, yes. We thought that three years was a rather short timeframe, given the investment that will have to be made in containers and trucks and that type of thing. And five years is not an unusual timeframe for contracts with the council. I don't know why they had chosen three years in the past, but we thought that five years seemed to be more appropriate.
Okay. All right, any further questions, comments? Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would ask that the sole bid opening be referred back to the Public Works Department and wait for them to return with their recommendation.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there anything further on the question? Commissioner Hendo?
Mr. Chief Executive, I just, I'm not getting it. If we had 12,567 locations that we are picking up, and we did pick up 11,353 at 862, I'm just, I'm confused how, how we're lower than when we were, but then I see we have another 1,200 added on. So, Dave, you couldn't answer that, but perhaps Jim could answer that as far as the amount, was that added in down the road? The 845 for the other extra 1,400 or whatever it is?
Commissioner Henderson, I don't, I don't think this is pertinent to the motion on the floor. I mean, I'm sure the McGrees would be happy to answer your question, but it's, you're talking about last year's numbers versus the numbers that we've got in front of us tonight. I guess, I don't know why we would.
One other thing, and then I'll ask Mr. McGree, Mr. Chief Executive. Could you please help me on, maybe Dave can, where do you get this accurate amount of locations that are picked up, this 12,567? Where do you get that?
I believe, and we're handicapped not having Danette Gleason here tonight, but I believe this comes probably from Pat Weirden from the tax role, so maybe from Mr. Fisher in the Tax Department. These are the number of parcels that are assessed, the fees within the solid waste collection district, as of now. And I assume that three years ago, that number was 11,353, but for whatever reason, I don't have an answer as to why, it's increased about 1,100 or so locations, and now that number is 12,567. So that's the most accurate information that we have at present.
And that was my question. Okay, okay. That is my question, but you don't have an answer for that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 2, we have a public hearing, Communication 1415-423, Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting council's authorization for an amendment to Ordinance 10.52.460 and to hold a public hearing. County Attorney, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, Members of Council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development for Butte Silver Bow. The Parking Commission has agreed upon a change to this ordinance, and so we're trying to bring it through that process. This is part of that process, to have a public hearing for folks to make comment. I will just say, the major change to the ordinance is the removal, basically, of a table that describes the two-hour parking zone in detail, street by street, block by block. What we're proposing is to make it more of a blanket ordinance that says that the designated parking, two-hour parking zones will be designated by the Parking Commission and then approved by this body. And then, that area will be depicted on a map, both stated in the Clerk and Recorder's Office and in the Parking Commission, and on our website. What this would allow us to do is to make adjustments to the two-hour parking zone as it's needed, and in a much quicker manner than having to amend an ordinance every time we want to change the two-hour parking zone or make some adjustment to it. So this would allow a lot more flexibility for both the Parking Commission and the Council of Commissioners if we were to look at changes to the two-hour zone. So that is the change that's proposed.
Okay. Do we have questions for Karen? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. First call for proponents. Are there any proponents of the ordinance amendments? Final call for proponents. Okay, are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Section 3, Consent Agenda. Do we have any friendly amendments or segregations? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Oh, here it is. I told the person that I would segregate this, I don't see him in the audience, but I'll segregate it anyway. Number nine, 15-459.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time, I move to approve the consent agenda, A1 through 5 and B1 through 29, with the exception of items... with the exception of Item 9, which is 15-459.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 15-459. Kevin Launey, 1604 Silver Bow Homes, requesting a name change of the Clark Chateau. The Chateau Mission Statement be rewritten by the Butte Silver Bow Government, and all items sold in the gift shop be related to Butte history. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Mr. Launey was here earlier, about 45 minutes ago. I thought he might be back by this time. I told him I would hold this so he could speak on it, but being as I do not see him anywhere, I would go ahead at this time and concur with the recommendation to refer this to the Butte Silver Bow Archives and the Archives Board. And I would hope at that time that that'd allow him to speak on this matter, as I feel that's more important than this body. So, at that time, I would make that recommendation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer to the Butte Silver Bow Archives and Archives Board. On the question, Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to make a motion to deny this request and place on file. Substitute motion, excuse me.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to deny this communication and place it on file. Is there anything on that question? Commissioner Anderson?
I think if someone does take the time, it would be... There is some merit to the... A few of the things in his letter, so I would like to see it to go forth to the Archives. There's some that I disagree with it, but I think that the best option would be for it to go to the Archives, so... Just my opinion.
Okay. We have the substitute motion. If there's nothing further on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. I guess we can ask to see who the nay votes were on that. Is that... Commissioners voting nay, identify yourselves. That'd be Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Anderson. Section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions. See the Council Bill 15-16, referred to Judiciary. Section 4, Ordinances. On second reading, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 15-15. Ordinance Number 15-15. An Ordinance Amending Chapter 10.52 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, entitled Parking, specifically amending Section 10.52.460, entitled Two-Hour Continuous Parking Zones, Designated and Providing for an Effective Date Herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill Number 15-15. Ordinance Number 15-15 on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
10 yea and 2 nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Section 5, Ordinances and Resolutions. Final reading, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 15-14. Ordinance Number 15-14. An Ordinance Amending Section 2 of Butte Silver Bow Ordinance Number 134 and Section 2.04.010 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, Adjusting the Annual Salaries of the Chief Executive, County Attorney, Sheriff, Clerk and Recorder, Treasurer, Assessor, City Judge, Justice of the Peace, Auditor, Superintendent of Schools, Clerk of the District Court, Coroner, and Members of the Council of Commissioners, and Providing for an Effective Date Herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place a Council Bill Number 15-14. Ordinance Number 15-14. On final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
8 yea and 2 nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number 2, clerk?
Resolution Number 15-43. A Resolution Authorizing and Approving the Sale of a Certain Parcel of Real Property Known as 208 South Washington Street, Butte, Montana, and More Particularly Described as Lot 18, Block 49 of the Butte Townsite Edition, Butte, Silver Bow, Montana, Parcel Number 0001140300, for the Purpose of Community Development in accordance with the Procedures of Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code and Providing for an Effective Date Herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Resolution Number 15-43 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
8 yea and 2 nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Number 3?
Resolution Number 15-44. A Resolution Authorizing the City, County of Butte Silver Bow and its Designee to Invest Funds in its Redevelopment Trust Account with the Montana Board of Investments, pursuant to the criteria and conditions provided by the Board of Investments in accordance with Section 17-6-205, MCA, and Providing for an Effective Date Herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Resolution Number 15-44 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can you please cast your votes? All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
9 yea and 1 nay.
Resolution passes. Now would be the time for any members of the public wanting to comment on matters that were not on the agenda this evening? Is there anyone wishing to give comment on an item that was not on the agenda this evening?
My name is David Jordan, 941 South Main Street. I'd like to comment on two items. One, I do not like this camera shining on people's faces. I think it's intimidating. It's not their best angle, and I wouldn't put it on Facebook myself, okay? The second one is I'm extremely disappointed in the striping of the lines on Main Street. I think they look slipshod and amateurish. And quite frankly, I don't think we should pay the bill if there was a quality factor involved in the contract. I don't think it was met. If there was no stipulation of quality for the contract, then shame on us for writing a contract like that. But that looks terrible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Putting your attention to the list of calendar meetings and events. Does anyone have anything to add or comment on? Monday is a holiday. I did handout. Got some folks. We have... I organized the inaugural Employee Golf Scramble on the holiday. And we've still got plenty of openings for teams. We're also asking that participants bring a canned or non-perishable item of food to be donated to the Butte Rescue Mission, but it's a four-man scramble, four-person scramble, and it starts at noon on Monday, Columbus Day. All right. Seeing nothing further. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The Butte Civic Center will be hosting the National NRA Rodeo this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It's an event that draws people to our community and could use the support. Thank you.
And there's a Business Card Social to that effect tomorrow night at the Civic Center, so... Commissioner Ralph?
I cannot give up the chance to say pickle again. Pickleball starts on the 12th, on Monday at 5:30 at the Civic Center. Oh, sorry. It's been postponed till the 19th now.
October 19th, Pickleball begins.
So, Cheryl, you can just see it again next Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to also mention that today is our illustrious colleague's, if he was here, his birthday. So, I'm sure he is listening on the radio. So, John, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Commissioner Morgan. Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I ain't certain, but I think the card social was tonight.
It was, yeah.
Was it tonight?
I believe it was.
God, they usually have them on Thursday nights.
It was tonight.
Okay.
But you can show up tomorrow with your card.
Scratch that. Show up tomorrow night. But you better bring cash for a ticket if you show up tomorrow night. All right. Anything further? Care to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.